All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's nine oh, I mean, seven, seven oh eight. Uh, this is the first of November Tuesday, the zoning commission will be called into order. Wait, we still do not have any citizens to be heard before we get that, we'll take road call, please. I apologize. President.
President.
Present.
Commissioner Herman.
Yes, I'm here, I'm logging in so you can have video of me. So just bear with me for just a moment.
No problem, sir. I'll instruct my commissioners to review the minutes from the last meeting before we get an approval. As we're waiting for the next steps.
Hearing no corrections, I move that we accept the minutes.
Soon as we get the full quorum available, we're almost ready, we haven't seen him yet, but.
I'll be back shortly, just don't worry.
Skip, we're just in a hurry. He is official. Finish the roll call, please.
Mr. Jackson, you're with us now.
Mr. Herman.
Mr. Herman.
I am.
Okay. You have a form.
Thank you, appreciate you, at this time we'll go and proceed with the agenda. There are no citizens to be heard, so we thank you, is anybody else online that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on first to the consent agenda. You have a motion, sir?
Yes, I may we accept the agenda as published, I mean, the minutes as published.
Have a motion in a second, Jackson second. Have a motion second, although the favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, new business. Let us start out with four point one, a public hearing discussion and possible action on an application for a special use permit. For Laura Jacobin at seventy one fifteen Blanco Road, number fifteen, one fifteen and one sixteen Castle Hills, Texas. Seventy two, one, three, more particularly described as CB five zero zero four, block one, seven, four, lot two. As found in the real property records of Bear County, Texas, to modify the zoning of the suite. To allow for continued use of the property to perform permanent makeup services. We've had these many times before. Um, is there any buddy here to present on that? Staff?
Good evening, counsel, I think there might have been a miscommunication with the applicant, she's not here, but I do have knowledge of her petition.
Thank you very much, we've, uh, we've done many of these before, so I'll just entertain a motion.
You can close the public hearings first.
Oh, thank you, I apologize. Public hearing at seven thirteen, a close of public hearing. And we'll go now into our discussion. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in view of the fact that we've heard information on this application in the past. I move that we approve the application and recommend the city council approve it.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. On Cormican Jackson again. Any discussion, 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 seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, now we'll move into four point two, open the public hearing. For discussion of possible action on an application for a special use permit. From, from Castle SUP, from Castle. Crown Castle Towers zero six dash two dash LLC at two zero zero two Lock Hill Selma, Castle Hills, Texas. Seventy two, one, three, more particularly described as CB. Five, seven, seven, eight, P dash ninety nine, AABS two six zero. CHCB two twenty, as found in the real estate copy rec- uh, records. Of Bear County, Texas, to formally authorize an existing monopole telecommunications tower. Equipment and facilities. As per. Code requirement, so is there anybody else here to speak on this behalf? This is the public hearing. Public hearing is open at seven thirteen. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chair members of the commission, I'm Bev Francis, one twelve A Spacan in San Antonio. I'm the attorney for Crown Castle and its subsidiary, uh, excuse me, Crown Castle Tower six, number two. With us this evening is Paul Peckins, Paul is National Manager of Zoning for Crown Castle, and he'll address you shortly. Also with us this evening is Gabriel Garcia. Gabriel is managing Director for Legal at CPS Energy. And Melissa Correo Cox, who is with the, uh, local government. It team, if you would, and I'm sure she has just met with y'all before. Both Gabriel and Melissa will address you shortly. But first and foremost, I want to take a moment and thank Louis, he has been amazing to work with us. So responsive, so personal, but so detail oriented. To make sure we presented the absolute best application. Provided you with the detailed drawings and site plans that you have before you. So on a personal note, we appreciate and we thank Louis and the attention that he's given it. This is a hundred and seventy foot monopole, and Gabriel will discuss additionally some more information about this facility. But it provides critical infrastructure for not only wireless carriers. But also CPS for their important interagency, if you would, system. Uh, that provides critical information sharing to make sure the substations and the operations work. So not only is this tower critical infrastructure. That benefits a wireless connectivity for your citizens. It also is the critical infrastructure for your utility. Now, what the studies are showing that the average Castle Hill home has a minimum of five wireless devices. If you think for a minute, that's probably underestimating it, by the time you have your smartphones, your tablets. Your ring doorbell systems that are critical for public safety, also that you control with your wireless connection. And now even we have the wireless medical devices, the ubiquitous cardio that you see advertised constantly. Where you can get your EKG, your glucose monitors. All those are so dependent on wireless connectivity and the service to your residents and your fellow neighbors. Importantly, though, after the pandemic, if there's one thing that did come out of the pandemic that's useful. Is the ability of telemedicine. For the first time, insurance companies recognize that a telemedicine. Uh, visit via your cell phone, your tablet in your home qualifies as a medical visit for insurance coverage. Again, though, your residents don't get the benefit, uh, unless they have that connectivity. But utmost importance to all of this and just trumps everything is the public safety. Records are showing that over eighty five percent of E nine one one calls, eighty five percent are placed by wireless devices. And we can't forget. How important the reverse E nine one one alerts are. We're in the middle of the night, our phones go off and alert us to either a, a. Uh, weather event occurring, take cover. Or be aware, or a manmade situation, either a crime, a suspect loose, be aware. Unless, again, your residents have that ability to have that wireless connectivity. That this tower brings to your neighborhoods. They're at a loss and are missing the, the public benefit. As a fun kind of final note, but it's so important. As a result of Hurricane Harvey. Communities such as yours, which has a very vibrant Facebook page. You all have a very active Facebook page. Learned that Facebook and Twitter and Instagram municipal pages. Are no longer just needed for. Fun events or who's moved to the city or when the Thanksgiving Day parade is. It's now become a vital public, uh, public safety platform. To immediately be able to contact your, your citizens through direct messaging. And for them to be able to reach back out to the city. But again, those platforms are dependent on the wireless connectivity. So, Mr. Chair members of the commission, uh, we're respectfully asking your approval of a recommendation to the city council. For the special use permit. We believe that we meet the requirements, not only of. Your code in providing critical infrastructure, public safety interest and in the best interest. Of the community by providing this critical infrastructure. But we have met the requirements to the application, the submittals of your code. So with your permission, I'd like to introduce Paul Peckins. Who is the National Zoning Manager for Crown Castle for a couple of words. And then, uh, the CPS team would like to address you. And we look forward to any questions that you may have.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, what's, what event has taken place that precipitated this application? Has, has it changed hands, is, do we have new ownership? Are you proposing to put an additional group of antenna up or what?
I think what the issue came up with an opportunity that's no longer there was to have. A new system put at the facility. And going through the process, and Gabriel will be able to expand on that. That, uh, we need to go ahead and properly document. The special use permit.
So that was never done when, when the tower was first installed?
Well, we can go into that, and we look forward to providing you that information back in nineteen ninety six, that. Uh, both records and the passage of time. Uh, as Gabriel will be able to elaborate, CPS has not been able to locate the special use permit, we have. Correspondence between CPS and the City of Castle Hills regarding the process. Uh, but because your record search stops, as we understand it, two thousand and eight commissioner. The city's not been able to locate the actual permit, so we're.
And I assume that if CPS couldn't find them, the city couldn't find them either, right?
Well, unfortunately, through sheer the passage of time, that's the.
Okay, that's, thank you very much.
Into compliance.
We can complete the presentation, then we'll have questions afterwards, if you want to follow up. Let's proceed.
Thank you and good evening, my name is Paul Peckins, I'm the National Zoning Manager, I'm based out of our Houston, Texas.
Would you mind moving the microphone a little bit closer to your mouth, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have to be pretty close to it to really do any good.
Okay. Hopefully this is better.
Good.
There we go. All right, again, Paul Peckins. Based out of our Houston, Texas office. Uh, as Mr. Francis said, I'm the National Zoning Manager for Crown Castle. Just, we're here this evening because of the partnership that we have with CPS. We look at their facilities as shared infrastructure. And that shared infrastructure is. An essential part of the community, especially the wireless connectivity within the community. It benefits the residents, the businesses, the first responders. It's also a way of limiting tower proliferation within a jurisdiction. So that you don't have multiple towers serving one service area. Then finally. Um. I'd like to stress that, you know, I, I'm, I'm here today, the team is here today. Because we take our commitment to the community very seriously. And we're happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission, I am Melissa Carillo Cox, and I serve on the local government relations team with CPS Energy. Um, we have had a very, uh, positive and productive longstanding relationship and partnership, really, with the City of Castle Hills. I work really closely with your city manager, Ryan Rappleye, uh, Mayor Trevino, uh, various council members, and of course, Mr. Louis. And just wanted to highlight the importance of our partnership with the City of, uh, Castle Hills, and thank you very much for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to add, um, I will be ensuring that you have my card, Commissioner, Commissioner. And if you ever have any, uh, issues or concerns, or just want to discuss any CPS energy related items, feel free to reach out.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, Chair and members of the commission, my name is Gabriel Garcia. I am, uh, counsel with CPS Energy, managing counsel for CPS Energy. I want to, uh, say a few words this evening about the relationship between. Uh, CPS Energy and Crown Castle. Uh, as a result of a transaction that was executed several years ago. Between CPS Energy and Crown Castle, Crown Castle has acquired an interest in, an ownership interest in, uh, the tower that's before you this evening. Uh, and they have the right to, uh. Man, maintain and operate the, the structure and use it for commercial purposes. Subject to CPS Energy's right to continue to use. The facility, the structure for its own communications equipment. That is the equipment that we use. In order to provide what we call SCADA communications, those sorts of essentially. The ability to provide real time information to our operators that are running the distribution system. So those commu- those communications facilities provide that vital information to provide real time. Information to our system operators. Uh, as mentioned earlier, you know, we, we have a longstanding relationship with, uh, Crown Castle. And this is a tower that was built in nineteen ninety six. For, again, reasons related to, uh. Moving from one. Facility to another. Uh, we cannot find the permit back from, uh, from nineteen ninety six, however, we did find some correspondence. Indicating that a permit was, was issued. Uh, and, uh, we'll be happy to share that information with you all if, uh, if you want to see that. Uh, but importantly, what the reason that we're here today is because we want to properly document the special use permit. Uh, that is really the, the, our primary focus. Uh, we, we have, uh, a very. A good working relationship with Crown Castle. And we have a very good working relationship with the City of Castle Hills, and we want to ensure. That there is no doubt as to the proper operation of this tower. So with that, I will open it to any questions of myself or my colleagues at Crown Castle.
Okay, just one second, let me complete the, uh, the public hearing. So is anybody else? Would like to speak on this issue, anybody online? Individ- on, in the person. Seeing none, then at seven twenty six, I close the public hearing. And now it is up to the commissioners to be able to ask any question they have a view.
Thank you.
Skip, do you want to start, or you've already asked your questions? Do you have any questions? No, not yet, not yet, yes, sir, Mr. Jackson.
What, uh, what caused this to come about at this time, is this, uh, where you're changing the capacity of the, the tower or something?
No, as, uh, as, as. Poppeck is previously mentioned. There was an initial project to install some new equipment at this facility. Um. They made a, a business decision was made to install it at another tower. Also, essentially, uh, at a CPS energy substation. But again, because we felt that. This, uh. We wanted to ensure, because we couldn't find the permits. We wanted to ensure that we are, you know, properly operating under everybody's eyes, we thought it would be a good idea to continue to move forward. With a special use, uh, application, special use permit application, so. So the initial impetus was a installation of facilities that are no longer going to be installed. But we thought it would be prudent just to continue the process. So there is no cloud over the use of this facility.
This is just covering the rear end on this deal, make sure that you got all the tickets.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I, I understand you're putting up some new projects, are you going to do any new construction on that, on that location?
So not at this moment, uh. Again, Crown Castle, under our longstanding agreement, has the right to use the tower for commercial purposes, so in the future, they, they could. Install equipment there. Uh, and this permit will ensure that if that happens, you know, in a few months or in, in a few years. That. The City of Castle Hills and your commission in particular has already authorized that.
So you're not going to put up another little building to house transmitters and that sort of thing, or is that what you're looking at, maybe?
Uh. Pot, not, not necessarily, like I said, at, at this point, there is no plan to install any other. Um, equipment. At that location, there's a particular footprint that, uh, Crown Castle has the use of. And they have, under our contract, they have the right to use that particular footprint. For additional equipment, but again, there is no plan to do that as of today.
Are you satisfied that this, this application for SUP will cover? Any future, uh, construction or installation of equipment that you're, you're contemplating?
I would let Crown Castle speak to that, it is their application, we are the property owners. So I would feel, I, I would feel more comfortable if, if they address your particular question, sir.
Yes, sir, at this time, we do not have any plans to put any additional equipment at the site. There may be upgrades that Verizon or T-Mobile or one of the wireless carriers want to do. But that's simply just to keep up with technology. If you look at the drawings, you'll see there is a portion of the compound. That is identified for future expansion. That's all covered within the special use permit. But there's nothing planned for that area right now.
And then specify as the future expansion of what, whether we're talking about another tower? Or a, a building or a shelter of some kind for equipment?
Uh, not a tower right now, I, I mean, I just don't foresee the need for one. Because of that, you know, shared infrastructure model. What would go on the ground is any type of base station, radio equipment, shelter, et cetera. And then if there were. Yeah, you know, some sort of additional carrier or technology that needed tower space, it could go utilize the existing structure.
And that will be an additional request, that's not going to be part of this.
It was required additional request, that was my understanding, I thought it probably would. So this, uh, just merely reserving an expansion area is not going to be sufficient. If you're going to put a building or something like that, then you need to come back with a new SUP application. By that additional equipment or, or structure. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, uh, you mentioned there were plans for something. Back in nineteen ninety six, what was planned that wasn't, um, followed through with?
No, that was the actual tower, that's when the actual tower was constructed back in nineteen ninety six. And so we looked for the S, for this special use permit. That would have been issued back in nineteen ninety six, and we couldn't find it. And the city could not find it either in their archives, so.
If you're granted a special use permit now, will anything about the tower change, will it become? Um, used for any different purpose, any, um. You know, stronger, I, I'm just curious as to how anything is going to change if the permit is issued now.
Nothing is going to change. We're simply trying to properly document. The special use permit, that.
Yeah, I think that's the bottom line, right, we're just basically cleaning up the paperwork that you're not able to have. If you'd be able to show this, and then as we know how sensitive some of these topics are, it's best to get all the paperwork together.
That is correct.
I'm going to continue, um, thank you all very much, please have a seat. Um, as we go through this, I, first of all, I want to thank Bev for being here, Mr. Francis. Uh, it's been quite some time, uh. You still look debonair and always dapper as always, but I remember the days. Uh, back in city council, you asked me when I served, I served in ninety two, so you're talking thirty years ago, brother, that we were working together. So congratulations on continuing making it happen.
Saying you're good and.
Your presentation, oh yeah, the hair is definitely white now, right? But, um, I, I will tell you, your presentations were always solid then, they're solid tonight, thank you. Mark, you have a comment?
I'm afraid, Mr. Solis, I have a lot of comments.
Yes, sir.
First, um, as most of y'all know, I was on this commission. From nineteen eighty seven till roughly two thousand and ten. The last ten years or so as chairman, so I sat on this commission. In nineteen ninety six, and I do remember the commission hearing an application. On behalf of this property for the monopole. I don't know what happened, I think the city, the zoning commission approved it, I have no idea what the council did.
Let me ask a question, are you before as, as the attorney or as citizen?
I'm here as the city attorney. But I want to share that information, because I thought.
No, 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 I, I just wanted to know what hat to wear when I'm listening to you, so I got you. City attorney, please forward on.
Public hearing, I couldn't speak if I were to speak.
That's what I was going to ask you, why you were speaking, but go ahead.
So I, I did want to make clear that, that, uh, what Mr. Garcia said and what the other speaker said about the. Original application being in nineteen ninety six, I take them at their word. I, I'm comfortable in saying that, that it did come before the zoning commission. At or about that time, and I'm comfortable in saying that the zoning commission recommended approval. To the city council, I have no records of that other than my memory. But as Mr. Rappleye will tell you, my memory is pretty good. Um. In addition, um, I do want to point out that the, um, the city as part of its due diligence, and Mr. Zamorong. Was part of that due diligence, uh, did pull the deed to this property, the deed to CPS Energy. Um, and discovered that the deed did have a deed restriction that, um. Is relevant, but I do not think is determinative. Um, the deed restriction says. That the, um. The, uh, restrictions are that all transformer station construction on the above described tract of land. Is to be located at least one hundred and eighty five feet from the property line. Of any private residence existing on October eighth, nineteen fifty eight. And that no part of the above described property may be used for any other commercial purpose than for use as a transformer station. This deed with the restrictions was filed, uh, was signed on December thirty, nineteen fifty eight. Um. And appears to have been. Um. Filed at or about that time. Unfortunately, this copy does not tell me exactly when it was recorded. Um, but I assume it would be, um, at or on, uh, December thirty or December thirty one of nineteen fifty eight. Um, a complaint. Um, about a deed restriction. Um, has a five, four year statute of limitations. So the deed restriction should not influence the decision of this commission. But I felt it important to let the commission know that that was uncovered by city staff. And, and not ignore it. And, and have the commission feel that it wasn't fully informed. But because of the statute of limitations, um, I don't think that deed restriction is likely to be enforced by a court. Um, i- in Bear County. Uh. Uh, there is, uh, presented to the commission, I mean, I think circulated by the city secretary, the city manager. Um, resolution twenty two, two thousand twenty two dash one, one, dash oh, one, B. Which is relevant to this application, I'd ask the commission to please consider that when you decide how to act on this.
That brings up another question.
I would like to address a question to the attorney.
Yes, to the attorney. Uh, will, will the people making the application for the SUP indemnify the city for our actions if we approve your application?
Mark, is that a fair question?
To me. Mr. McCrory, if you're asking Mr. Francis as attorney for the applicant.
Yes.
That's his call as to, you know, what he, he would recommend and what his client would be interested or willing to do. Um, I'll ask Mr. Francis to address.
I think we're entitled to ask that question at this point.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner, I guess I'm a little bit. Confused as to what we would be asked to do as far as, having done this for a number of years as the.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Schnau's point was that the deed restriction doesn't appear to be a big problem. But if it is raised and somebody. But if it is raised and somebody does file a lawsuit on the basis of the deed restriction, they would be filing suit against you and probably would enjoin the city as an additional party. And I'm wondering if you will indemnify the city for any action the city has has to pay for to respond to a lawsuit on the basis of this deed restriction.
I would, we would have to ask for a uh to maybe discuss that internally. We've never had to do that before. Even as deed restriction and and Mark can very accomplished real estate can point out again that zoning changes or changes in zoning do not affect and can do away with deed restrictions. Y'all deal with that all the time with Platts that have deed restrictions and so forth. So law in Texans is by you addressing a zoning, either an S U P or rezoning, it doesn't extinguish existing deed restrictions.
I understand that. What I'm what I'm what I'm wondering about is if the city could sustain any allegation of liability for having approved your S U P in the face of the deed restriction that we now know of. And if that's the case, I don't think it's likely, but I'm I think it's a fair question to ask if the applicant and the and the landowner will indemnify the city.
I would say that I don't I don't think it's relevant. In my estimation, I mean, nineteen fifty-eight, the extension is already done. I think we're overstepping our bounds. It's a fair question. They can answer yes or no, and we can move on. But I think we're ready to move on to this.
Actually, I I don't agree. I think that the the fact is that the nineteen fifty-eight deed restriction is still in place. Any landowner adjoining that property can raise the complaint at any time, regardless of.
With every meeting that we do, when we pass a special use permit, it's exactly understanding of that. Every every decision we make is opens us up for that if you want to leave it that way.
Well, I know, but there is a deed restriction and and the deed restriction has limitations on it. I move that we that we postpone this for for time for them to respond to my my inquiry.
I would second that motion. Mr. Zamaron wanted to make one comment. Um, it's a little out of the ordinary, but if you indulge him to let him make his comment and then consider Mr. McCormick's motion.
I was contacted by council for the Boy Scout camp today, and he discussed with me the deed and the restriction on the deed. And he wanted to know what the city's position was uh in regards to this.
I'm sorry, I can't understand you, Mrs. Zamora. Would you move a little closer to the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
That's good.
Okay. What I was saying is I was contacted by council for the Boy Scout camp who brought the deed restriction to my uh attention. He said that he was contacted uh by Mr. Francis, uh, something to the effect that they were hoping to have the deed restriction lifted. Uh, council for the Boy Scout camp told me that they were not inclined to move forward with lifting the restrictions unless it was, quote, okay with the city. So we are basically the dog in the fight. That's a decisive factor on whether that deed restriction survives or not. And I can't speak as legal counsel, but.
The problem is the deed restriction is still there, and any any subsequent landowner can raise it. Doesn't have to be a current landowner. The landowner doesn't have to have been there when the deed was originally issued. The deed restriction is part of the of the the record on that on the piece of property.
Current council.
What the Boy Scouts want to do with it has nothing to do with today's decision.
Current council for the Boy Scout camp is inclined to remove the deed restriction as requested by Mr. Francis if it's okay with the city.
He's inclined to remove it?
Yes, sir.
Will he send us a letter to that effect?
I can ask him.
Would you?
Yes, sir.
And I I move that we postpone the decision on this matter until the next meeting.
You'll need a second.
I'll second that motion.
You're not eligible to be the second. Unfortunately, because of the way the meeting started, I don't believe Mr. Herman can vote.
Mr. Herman has participated in this part of the discussion. He's been visible and could be heard.
So can he vote or not?
So he can vote on this issue. He could not vote on those issues uh where he was not visible uh and and audibly able to uh speak to the whole room. But on this issue, Mr. Herman can participate since he's been on the screen and listening and act and participating in the meeting at this point.
Thank you for the clarification.
On a motion to table, so you immediately to a vote.
And I got you, but I needed to make sure who was eligible to vote. Appreciate it. Uh, so there's a motion and a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay.
Two and two.
When did you vote?
She voted nay. Did you vote nay? Okay.
Oh. Three, two.
This Craig, you want to do a roll call real quick? Just for the.
Commissioner Solis?
No, on the motion to table.
Commissioner McCormick?
I vote that we postpone. Vote it to table.
Commissioner Ben Cho- Ben Gocia?
I vote to table.
Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Herman?
Motion carries. Issued your.
Motion, motion was was defeated.
So we will postpone, move it to the next agenda. All right, so let's go.
I thought the I thought the vote was to to go ahead with it today.
No, you voted to kill it.
Okay.
Do you know what you're doing?
Yeah, I did. But we 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 voted aye and nay, and I voted aye that I wanted to to table it and I understood that the other vote was to proceed today with it. So then my vote was was also a nay.
I knew you had the motion to approve it from the very onset. But now you changed it. You can reconsider your vote.
I'm reconsidering my vote. My vote is to postpone this thing.
Um, no, it's already done. It's bon pon. Gotcha. So let's move forward to the next item. Four point three, review and discuss short-term rental provisions in the city zoning ordinance, including but not limited to prohibition on use of habitable accessory building for short-term rentals. Who will speak on this behalf? Staff. Louis, are you coming forward? Welcome back.
Yes, sir. Guess I'm prepared. I'm as prepared as I'll ever be, yes.
Okay, so it's a review and discuss short-term rental provisions in the city ordinance, uh, city zoning ordinance, but not limited to prohibition on use of habitable accessory buildings for short-term rentals. Please explain what we're looking at.
Two cases came before the Board of Variances, Board of Variance, asking for variances to allow their habitable accessory use structure to be used as short-term rentals. It created a little bit of a conundrum because of the actual short-term rental application says the zoning ordinances will be adhered to, refer to chapter fifty, covering single A and double A type, single-family residence, which prohibits the use of accessory use structures for anything other than occasional non-paying guests or staff, caretaker staff to live in those accessory use structures. Rather than the Board of Variance uh granting uh those variances and perhaps creating a precedence, they refer the uh matter back to this board to determine uh if a discussion should be uh in uh undertaken to discuss the prohibition of using accessory use structures as short-term rentals.
Let me break it down. These are Airbnbs. We have an ordinance. But you were talking about within the Airbnb, I suppose, property. We're talking about the accessory buildings in the back of a home that whether that's going to be utilized as an Airbnb or not.
That's correct, sir. Habitable accessory use structure.
Everybody understand where we're at?
Yeah, I'm afraid the code for your clarion and what you can do as an accessory building.
Okay. So the Mark, you want to give us the the context of why it was kicked to us?
I was not at the Board of Adjustment meeting, but I what I understand was the Board of Adjustment wanted to to see if the zoning commission today had the same position that the zoning commission had when the uh short-term rental provisions were um added to the recommendation from the zoning commission in the comprehensive review and rewrite of the zoning ordinance in twenty twenty, about two years and a few months ago. It went to the city council um for action in July of twenty twenty. The council adopted uh the uh new zoning ordinance with the changes, which included the short-term rental provisions and the zoning ordinance clearly says that you, a there, a short-term rental is not permitted in a habitable accessory accessory building. Um, it's, I I've got the the code back here.
No problem. We're we're fine. So I guess, since this is just a discussion and review, since it was kicked to us, what say you?
Well, I recall discussing this matter in the past, and the code has some very clear language on what what uses may be made of habitable accessories. They can be occupied by caregivers, household servants, and family members. They may not be rented, period. That's in, that's pretty much a quote from the code. And regardless of what was put into the short-term rental uh provisions, I do not believe that there is a provision in there that authorizes the rental of accessory buildings as an Airbnb or a short-term rental. The problem with that is twofold. First of all, in the area of Foxhole, the streets over there are about sixteen feet wide, if that's all. And to increase the population density in there by allowing short-term rentals of habitable accessory buildings that may be present or that might be built in the future. Um, I think we we are overloading our streets. We don't have the street capacity now for the traffic that we have. If we increase the the population density in the Foxhole area, that's a real problem. In the rest of the city, I recognize that there are a number of individuals with whom I've had an occasion to speak who want to rent out their habitable accessories, want to be able to do that. On the other hand, there are a large number of people who don't want to have rental properties next door to them and have the problems that have been associated in the past with with rentals. I've been a landlord. I understand what those kind of problems are. They can be a real pain. And whether we, uh, if if we want to authorize short-term rentals on habitable accessories, we'll be increasing the problems that go with those kinds of of rental properties. I I I think my my position hasn't changed. I'm still opposed to renting out habitable accessories other than as stated in the code.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? No, no motions needed. It's just a discussion. Just a review and discussion and and actually buyer discussion, the fact that we're not moving it forward, self-explanatory, um, and the message is sent back. Yes, sir.
Chairman, I'd also like to, I know you asked Mr. Schnau the background. Uh, part of it was that we had, we've issued about thirteen, I believe, short-term rental applications. And I think during the process, two of them was not caught during the process. It had this detachable um accessory structure to the building. And so that's kind of the issue with those two operators of the short-term rental right now is what we do essentially with them operating the short-term rental. And again, I think the B O A thought the process should be or figured that it may be taken up in zoning and then city council if something needed to be corrected.
I think the zoning commission made its decision in twenty twenty, not too long ago. Um, my other thing would be, what is your normal mode of operation when it didn't get caught? How do you rectify that?
Uh, the city is not liable for any error made by the clerk.
I'm asking him, Ryan. So what you just mentioned, basically, you're like, we have these two people that are operating or or think they can operate it outside of a zoning, so it didn't get caught by staff.
Again, I think, and again, I think this was the idea that they could get a variance um for for this instance.
Which isn't going to happen.
Yep.
So what happens next? Finish the story for me.
Chairman, I'm not sure right now. Um, again, if it's um.
I if I may, if I may, this is chairman. Assuming that the two uses, users of habitable accessory buildings were using those buildings for that purpose, including Airbnb or Ver- Verbo or other platforms that do short-term rentals. And they were doing that before we had a short-term rental ordinance. I believe they are grandfathered.
This is not the case. These are people who applied, who went through the process with all the rules. Our staff did not catch it. My estimation is an easy cease and desist letter to them saying, hey, we're now catching it up.
I I didn't realize that, Mr. Mr. Chairman. I thought these were pre-existing and we're just registering as as existing prior to the adoption of our ordinance. If these were newly permitted, then we need to look at uh the the proper procedure um to address them, which probably is not necessarily a cease and desist order, but probably to decline to renew their permits because their permits are subject to renewal, if I remember right, under the ordinance.
Yes, on an annual basis.
Yeah, okay, so.
Annual?
Your short-term rental, maybe you have to renew every year.
So in the subsequent year, they'll have to adhere to the rules that were originally there.
Correct, because you essentially start the process over for a permit uh which requires inspections again and so on.
Sure. Any comments? Anybody else?
I feel like the ordinance is just staying as is.
Mr. Chairman, I should point out that even in the instance that Mr. Rapley described, those two parties could go back to the Board of Adjustment and ask for a variance in light of their investment, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and that becomes an issue for the Board of Adjustment to decide.
That is correct.
I think that that you're going through the commission and asking each member of the commission what their thoughts are about this is exactly the approach to take this evening. And if there's no no indication that anyone or no majority of indication that this should be revisited, then it dies here.
Correct.
And and Chairman, just so you know, that the Board of Adjustments essentially tabled those two applications until February. Because as we all know, there's a process for seeing if zoning wanted to move this forward to council and so on.
Agreed. Um, I think, has everybody spoken? Anything else seen on? Then then the discussion is over. Let's move on um to the adjournment. So at seven fifty-six P M, I'll need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion? Second, second? We have a motion second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion carries. Thank you all, guys. Good job. One hour.